So, commission is meeting December 7th, 2016. First item on the agenda is public comment. I guess there's nobody. Next item is meeting minutes from November 16th, regular session.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next item is payroll and payable warrants.
I make a motion to approve the town FY17, number 21, 22, and 23 warrants. Sewer Enterprise FY17 SE9 warrant, and municipal light plant number 11 warrant covering the period, it's November 17th through December 7th, 2016.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Next item is consider signing contract with the Teamsters. This is for the DPW contract?
It is. This is the final contract that's based on the memorandum agreement that you signed with the union.
Make a motion to approve the contract is...
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, I'll pass this down. I guess there's four copies here?
Yes, there's four originals.
Next item is consider approving the hiring of the following individuals as temporary part-time plow drivers for the Department of Public Works effective December 8th, 2016 until May 31st, 2017. Donald McKenzie, William Mulcahy, and Stephen Mulcahy.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Our next item is consider assigning representative for the joint discussion with the Cemetery Board of Trustees, the Personnel Board on proposal to include Cemetery Department in the, in with the DPW. I would be interested in doing that if there's no one else.
Make a motion to approve. Chris Richards, the representative?
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Next item, we're going to hand over the section to you, to the Town Administrator for updates on her items.
Thank you. First item is just to let the board know that we are part of a 20-town group that will be working with CMRPC to do an update to our hazard mitigation plan. This needs to be updated every five years. CMRPC received a grant to work with the 20 towns to do this. At the planning, at the initial planning meeting, which our DPW director and I attended, it was determined that rather than try to approach this as a 20-town process, CMRPC will work with each town individually. So sometime over the spring period, we will be having several meetings where we'll have to call in the necessary stakeholder groups, planning groups, open space community planning board, conservation, DPW, public safety, and, excuse me, and look at various known hazard areas that we have in town that might be affected by either man-made or a natural disaster situation. So that work will be underway. We're committed to providing approximately 2,000 hours of staff and volunteer time to, as part of that grant obligation, which will easily be able to meet just basing the number of hours that would be involved in the staff that's known to participate, myself, public safety officials, and then we have a rate for volunteers that we apply. So we'll easily be able to cover our $2,000 obligation on that. But just wanted to let the board know that this is going to be coming up soon. We do have an update on the Wayne's weaponry situation. The judge in that case has issued a preliminary injunction that sets the requirements of how the gun range can be used until the final court decision is made. And basically that requires that the gun range only be used by certain Allstrom family members. It can no longer be used by friends outside of the family or customers of the gun shop. And they've limited the shooting times to be between 10:00 a.m. and 2:00 p.m. Monday through Sunday. So those are Saturdays, excuse, thank you, on Sunday with no shooting. These restrictions will be in place until the matter is finally resolved by the court. And I believe they have a court date that's pushed out to the springtime at this point. I wanted to let...
On that one, has the police department given instructions on what to do?
Yes.
If they break this, okay.
Yes, police department and the zoning enforcement officer. So we're, we understand what our obligations are. It's, it's not so much that we will be responsible for enforcing this, but we are responsible for notifying the court when there are violations of the restrictions.
Okay, so go ahead.
So this is in effect immediately?
Yes.
And have we heard anything about how it's been going?
We have not heard anything.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Will this be advertised in the press banner?
I'm sorry, Rush, could you repeat that?
Will this be published in the banner?
I can't say if it would or not. This is, you know, the, the results of the injunction hearing are public record, so I'm not sure if the banner will be publishing this or not. Okay. We do have a change of hours for the Regional Recycle Center that's located here in town. Effective January 1st, the center will no longer be open on Monday nights. Instead, they'll be open the first Saturday of each month during the winter months of January, February, and next December. And then during the months of March through November, they'll be open Thursday evenings rather than the Monday evenings that they had. Basically, this change was done to remove the difficulties and the hazards that they were finding of having the center being open winter nights when it's dark, it's icy. So they really felt that it was a way to improve those unsafe conditions, but also to save money on the electric bill by not having to run the large spotlights during the winter night. It will be a savings to their utility bills. They're also doing some minor change to the fees regarding the appliances, TVs, tires. No major fee change, just minor adjustments.
It's going to go down, right?
Excuse me?
It's going to go down, right?
No, they're going to, very small amounts. So, you know, I don't think it's going to be a case where people will no longer want to take those items to the center. It's really meant that, to be a small adjustment to help reduce the loss that the center is facing annually. So there is a new brochure that's being printed up. As soon as that is finalized, we'll get it out there to people on the website. We'll put postings out, and we'll get it mailed out to the, all the mailboxes in town as soon as it's available to us.
So the, so it's, the first Saturday is an add-on to the third Saturday?
It is, only for those three winter months.
So once we get the exact hours and everything, we can announce it here?
But I wanted to start letting people be aware that there were going to be changes.
And Mr. Chairman, when do the new dollar go into effect? Is it January?
January 1st is...
Okay, just in case people need to know between now and the end of the year, they might visit more.
Wanted to let people know that we do have the final tally of what the cost was for the town for the early voting provision that took place for the presidential election and the cost associated with the town's special election. Obviously, the early voting is a mandated process that we are obligated to comply with for both state and federal elections, but it did add approximately $1,363 to the town clerk's budget that was not anticipated for FY17. And then the, the special election that took place to approve the funding, the debt exclusion borrowing for the police station project cost the town 300, excuse me, $3,881 approximately. So with these two added expenses, we're going to have to watch the town clerk's budget pretty carefully and determine whether or not a reserve fund transfer might be needed or perhaps a, a year-end budget fix at the Springtown meeting.
Data, I was just curious. The early voting was only 1,360?
Yeah. I asked the town clerk to detail it out, and yeah. So, and that was basically just the... There were some minor costs with the programming of the ballot machines, and there was the labor cost of having the additional hours for the public above and beyond normal town clerk hours to give people an opportunity to come in and do the early voting.
So there were people, though, there were people being paid even when the town, during the day? So that did cover it off?
Correct.
Okay.
According to the town clerk.
Mr. Chairman, is that 3,800 normal for a special town election? I'm just curious.
For the current town clerk, yes.
So that's the normal. Okay, that's not higher than what it's been. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. I've been asked to give an update on where we stand with the volunteer grant writer position. Theo Jordan, who is our volunteer, has been busy helping both the Council on Aging and the Fire Department with grant applications over the last few months. The COA grant that he helped apply for was to provide some exercise programming for the elderly, and that was a grant that's been applied to, to the Griswold Cares Foundation. We should hear about that later this month. And the fire department grant was a form of funding for a new fire truck, and that grant amount that we've applied for is $550,000 to replace the rescue engine. And we should hear about that grant in early 2017. Wanted to also let people know that the ZBA is going to be looking into this issue of requiring a local preference for some of the affordable units that are going to be built at the North Main Street 40B project. Under that comprehensive permit, a goal was established that we would set local preference options for some number of those 20 affordable units that are being constructed. And so the ZBA will be holding a meeting next week where they'll start to talk about whether or not that's appropriate for the town and under what conditions that would happen. And then just miscellaneous updates on the community compact. We're in the process of gathering estimates for both the housing consulting services to work on the housing production plan update and for the pavement condition analysis so that we can get an updated pavement management plan. I need to get those estimates, send them to DOR, and they will then use those estimates to finalize the contract amounts for the grants that will be given to do those bits of work under the...
Excuse me.
And on the complete streets, we have received a green light from Mass DOT to begin work on the complete streets prioritization plan. I had a brief meeting with CMRPC yesterday to talk about what the process will be, and it looks like we will have CMRPC on the streets the week between Christmas and New Year's to do a survey of existing sidewalks. And they will want to meet with the necessary stakeholder groups, meaning Planning Board, Board of Selectmen, Transportation Committee, other, other groups, to try to develop a list of areas of town that we should have included in the prioritization plan and to start talking about specific projects that we feel would be appropriate to be included in that. So this project, this whole process will take place between January and March. And we're looking to have a final prioritization plan to be presented to the Board of Selectmen and hopefully endorsed by the Transportation Committee by the end of March. And that will be very helpful to inform us as we move forward with our public safety projects, excuse me, our pavement projects over the next few years. And that's it for the Town Administrator's report.
Does anybody have any questions? Okay. Next item is some invoices from the FIS committee. Cardinal Construction payment number seven, 13,945.64.
954.64. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The next one is Cardinal Construction invoice number eight, 8,088.94.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The next item is Reinhardt. I guess it's number seven, $19,500.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I think I jumped ahead. Now the presentation on the board and Town Administrator's goals. I knew you were getting ready for it.
Okay. Thank you. I was asked to provide an update as to where we stand in both the Board of Selectmen goals for this year and for Town Administrator goals. And what we have is a summary of what was discussed at the goal-setting workshop that took place this summer. The Board of Selectmen identified FY17 goals that they'd like to accomplish, and also identified the goals from FY16 that they wish to carry over into the year. The FY17 goals include the completion of a sewer rate study, negotiation of details regarding the Holy Cross Community Partnership. Third one is to assist the Board of Cemetery Trustees with cemetery expansion. Fourth is to develop recommendations for inclusion of the Cemetery Department into the DPW. And the fifth was to revisit the issue of an RFP for disposal of the town-owned land on Tibman Drive. So these are the five FY17 goals that the board established. Of the FY16 goals, the three to be carried over include completion of a customer satisfaction survey for both citizens and town employees. The second was to change the town clerk position from elected position to an appointed position. And the third was to continue work on the police station and the senior center. So to review the status of each of these goals, starting with the FY16 goals, goal number one, which was the citizen and employee survey, no action has been taken on this goal as of yet. But in review of the expectations, it looks like the best way to proceed with this would be to use the promised Holy Cross students, college students, or other college interns for assistance in the project. It would be a good use of their experience, and it would be an appropriate project. And therefore anticipate doing this as either a spring or a fall 2017 project. So this is yet to be proceeded with. The second goal for FY16 was making the town clerk an appointed position. As we know, the October town meeting has approved the change, and so we're in the process of submitting that petition to our Senator and to our representative, Senator Chandler, Representative O'Day, to file so that the legislation can take action on this when the formal session starts in January. Hopefully, it will be completed in this session. If not, we have been assured that it will be carried over at the next available time slot. Pending this legislative approval, the Personnel Board has already reviewed and approved the new job description, which includes the changes associated with making this an appointed position. And I've been having regular meetings with the town clerk to discuss how we need to actually implement this change. Once we do hear that the home rule petition has been approved. The third goal...
Could you just send out the job description? If you already have, I don't know if I saw it. Can you send it out to...
I will be glad to send it out.
Be the whole board, I'd like to see it.
The third goal was both the police station project and the senior center project. For the police station, the October town meeting did approve the additional funds that were needed for construction. And as a result, we have chosen the contractor, that's REC Builders out of Agawam, Mass. They were the low bidder on the project, and they came with excellent references. Site work and foundation work has already begun, and we anticipate the project completion likely in August or September of 2017. So that is moving ahead well. Regarding the senior center project, town meeting did approve the $10,000 needed for the schematic design. The architect hired was Catlin and Petrovic out of Keene, New Hampshire. John Catlin is well-known to have vast experience in senior center design, and he's already working with FISP and his sub-bank of FISP on the programming review. It's expected that the actual schematic design would be completed by the end of the calendar year. We actually have a special FISP meeting that's been planned for December 15th to talk about the size of the building and that programming effort so that he can get that work done. And at this point, it's anticipated that FISP will ask the selectmen to schedule a special town meeting and election for approval of the funds for the full design and for the bidding of the construction for a senior center. That town meeting and election hoping to take place in early 2017, date to be determined. So that's where we stand on the FY16 goals that were carried over. And then regarding the FY17 new goals, the first one being the sewer rate study, we've taken no action on this as yet, but the town accountant and I are ready to seek votes from qualified consultants in January. And we will bring forward the proposals from those consultants in early February with the hope that the choice of the consultant would take place at the February 15th Selectmen's meeting. We anticipate that the actual study would take eight to 10 weeks, hoping to get a draft report from the consultant in mid-April. And we anticipate that we would have a formal presentation from the consultant and the board to vote on those recommendations that the consultant provides at the May 3rd meeting.
So if I could ask, so the consultant is going to tell us if our rates are comparable, how they fit with other towns?
It will be a comparison of what a... It will be a comparison of what the towns have, but more importantly, the consultant will be looking at our revenues and expenses, known expenses, including what capital projects have been recommended to move forward. So taking all that into account, we'll want to make sure that it's revenue neutral or some degree of profit being established by our budgets. And that may require that we do a slight modification to the sewer rates. So the recommendations you'll be getting from the consultant would likely be some recommendation of adjustment on the sewer rates.
So it's a review of the whole sewer department, not really just the rates?
It's not just the rates because the rates are based on what we have for expenses and revenues. And knowing that, you know, in, under good conditions, we would be revenue neutral, meaning that our monies, revenues received from sewer billing would cover all of the expenses. But most of these enterprise funds do look for some degree of profit to build a capital fund to cover unforeseen expenses, sewer breaks or capital improvements that the sewer commissioners, who is the board, would want to do in the future.
Any other questions on that? No. Thank you.
The second goal was to develop the community partnership with Holy Cross. So as people have seen discussed at previous Selectmen's meetings, we did seek requests from our different departments. We did get a broad range of different requests that came in. The Chair, Chris Richo, and I met with Holy Cross on November 15th, present that list of requests. And Holy Cross anticipates having a decision by mid-December after their board meeting, which will take place, I believe, on December 15th. So we will be hearing from them regarding which departmental requests they would be likely to approve and move forward with by the end of the year. And then moving forward, we anticipate that we'll end up having an annual review of updated requests with Holy Cross to determine what each year's funding might be moving forward. We did receive confirmation, though, from Holy Cross that they are definitely interested in developing internship partnerships with us so that we would have ability to work with Holy Cross students on various projects, special projects. It would be a great help to our town departments. And they also said that they felt it was a no-brainer, so to speak, to offer their facility to town boards and committees throughout the year as their schedule allowed it so that we could use that facility for special meetings.
I'd only add, I'm not sure if that mid-December meeting will give the decision on what they're going to do. It may open up some more discussion.
It may end up asking, you know, we may have to meet again. They may look for additional clarification from us.
Right. They're going to present it to their board.
Right.
And talk about it there.
Correct. Their review by the board will take place at that mid-December meeting. And hopefully, they'll have an answer for us. If not, we'll continue that discussion as needed. Third goal was for cemetery expansion. I've been working with the Board of Cemetery Trustees to define the search criteria for the features that they would be looking for, for land that they might be interested in acquiring. Using that information, I developed an RFP. The RFP has been reviewed with Town Council and it's currently out for advertisement. And proposals are due in early February. The Board of Cemetery Trustees will work with me to review any proposals received and will bring forward best proposal or proposals for joint discussion with the selectmen for potential execution of a purchase and sale agreement, which will be conditional upon a town meeting approving the purchase and designating, appropriating the funds. So that process should be completed well in time for consideration at the May town The fourth goal was the proposal to include the cemetery department into the DPW. I have met with the Personnel Board to discuss the basics of what that would look like. And the Personnel Board has requested a joint meeting, which we previously discussed a few moments ago, with the Selectmen and with the Cemetery Board in January. They also have met separately with the Cemetery Superintendent, and I believe they're having a meeting with the DPW Director on next Monday. So this meeting is intended to identify the pros and cons to the proposal of including the cemetery department into DPW. Depending on the outcome of that meeting, it's impossible at this time to try to decide what the timeframe is for making a decision. I think it would be very hard to feel we would have any firm proposal ready for the May town meeting. So this may be something that would be put forward for consideration at the October town meeting if it's determined to be appropriate. The fifth goal was to, again, do an RFP for the property that the town owns on Tibnan Drive. No action has been taken on this goal yet. I anticipate that the board would be establishing a subcommittee to work with me to develop the RFP in the similar manner that I worked with the Board of Cemetery Trustees. I'd like to think that we could have an RFP process occur during the spring and summer. But again, until we have the criteria established and the RFP finalized, it's impossible to try to determine the actual timeframes and when we would anticipate any related town meeting action to take place. So that's it for the status of the Selectmen's Goals. Now, moving on to the Town Administrator's Goals that were established for this year. The first goal was to develop comprehensive financial policies. The second goal was to complete the delayed FY15 and FY16 Holden sewer billing and to research past bills that are still due payable to the town. Third one was to work on the master plan update with the Townwide Planning Committee. The fourth goal was the weekly Town Administrator blogs or announcements on the website. And the fifth is to work with the DPW on the pavement management plan and Chapter 90 projects. So as relates to those goals, the first goal being the financial policies, the finance team, which includes members of the accounting office, treasurer collector's office, assessor's office, and occasionally the town clerk's office, we're working on evaluating the existing financial policies. And we're also getting samples from other communities in terms of what comprehensive financial policy documents look like. We'll be doing a comparison of those samples against our existing policies. And we anticipate that that work would be done this spring, April at the latest. And based on that review, I'm sure that we'll be bringing forward for Selectmen and Finance Committee considerations, some additional policies in the April-May timeframe. The Holden sewer billing was goal number two. The FY15 billing has been completed by DPW. It's currently under review by Holden. There may be some adjustments that need to be done, but we're anticipating that we should be getting payment from Holden for the FY15 billing early, early next year. Once the FY15 format has been accepted, we'll immediately begin with the FY16 billing using that same format. Regarding the research into any unpaid bills, unpaid by Holden to the Town of West Boylston, we had heard that there were some unpaid bills from prior years. So the accounting office and I anticipate that we'll be using college interns in the fall of 2017 to research any old unprocessed billings from prior years. If we find that there are indeed some unpaid bills, these are past-year bills that the Town of Holden would not be able to pay without town meeting approval. So we would need to have discussion with them about how we would go ahead and get payment approved for any unpaid bills. Part of the complication with that is that with some of the billing, if it's as old as has been contended, we may not have detailed information on which to provide credible information about the amount that Holden would be owing the town for those prior years. So it may be a situation where we would have to come to agreement with Holden on what information we would base those estimated amounts that were passed due. And obviously, the board sewer commissioners would be involved in all of that discussion and we would be making the final decisions on how we proceed with that. For the master plan update is goal number three. The Townwide Planning Committee is currently reviewing the previously edited chapters. Just to recap, before the prior Town Administrator left, the Townwide Planning Committee had begun reviewing the 2005 master plan and attempting to do some editing to those chapters for this new update. But concurrently, I am working with Jean Costello, resident who has volunteered to work with me to identify the best format and process for working on these chapters and working on the new master plan update. With a key part of that process being making sure we have good citizen engagement in this process because that will be key to making sure people understand and are accepting of the master plan goals that end up being put forward. So I greatly appreciate Jean's help in that. As part of this process, we will be starting to meet with the various town committees and stakeholder groups to get feedback on how we need to adjust chapters. That will take place during the months of January and March. And we anticipate the startup citizen engagement to take place throughout 2017. Process, timing, et cetera, yet to be determined. And I will be looking for some feedback from the Board of Selectmen and other boards and committees on that. And we'll work that through with Jean's help. So the Townwide Planning Committee has no completion date established as of yet for this update to the master plan. I'm assuming that once we get through the first part of the citizen engagement and have the feedback from the town committees, that we'll have a much better sense this spring of when we would likely expect the update to be completed. The Town Administrator's Blog, those weekly announcements have commenced, although I did hear from our IT Director the other day that there needs to be an adjustment on the website to make sure that when those announcements go out to people who have subscribed to the list, that it's clear that it's coming from the Town Administrator. So we do need to make that change. I anticipate using this announcement format, as had been done in the past, to inform those people who are on the subscriber list of key town activities. But also, it's expected that this will be used as needed for getting time-sensitive information out to the public. It's one of many ways that we can get information out to those people who have subscribed to this particular aspect of our website. And the fifth goal is the pavement management and Chapter 90 projects. The current pavement analysis report, pavement management plan, is out of date. So we did receive Tier Two grant funds from the Complete Streets Program to hire CMRPC to assist us in developing the Complete Streets prioritization plan. And as I previously mentioned under my report, that work will take place between the months of January and March. Additionally, we're fortunate to be declared a community compact town. And we have been given green light that we will be getting funds to hire a consultant to update the pavement management plan in the spring of 2017. So once these two documents are completed, they will be used to identify and prioritize street improvement projects that we want to put forward over the next few years. So that is a work in progress. And that's it for the status of the goals.
Didn't we just do a project pavement plan like last year?
It was last done in 2015, but it was never updated. And we have done numerous pavement projects since then. We've also had deterioration of the roadways since then. So it won't be a large project. It should be a very small project, therefore small in cost to the state. But it's key to make sure that we have that updated because, as I mentioned, we'll be using that in conjunction with the Complete Streets prioritization plan to prioritize and make credible decisions about what Chapter 90 projects we put forward in the future.
Is this something, I mean, it was done, it'll be two years out of date by the time we get this updated. Is this something that we're going to have to update on a yearly basis?
The pavement management plan does need to be updated yearly because your pavement condition for those roads that have not been, you know, worked on, that pavement condition deteriorates yearly.
So that's something we're going to have to keep in mind when we're developing the DPW's budget, is that in order to do this right, we have to allocate X dollars per year to make sure we can maintain our streets.
One of the things that I feel will be a positive outcome of working with a consultant to update that plan is that our new DPW Director will see how it's done. And he should be able to update that plan annually by himself. And then it might only require maybe every five years, bringing a consultant in to assist with a more comprehensive update. But it's something that, as long as we stay on top of it and do it annually, that's something he should be able to-
One thing, the Chapter 90 money, we didn't use for three or four years, at least. So it just sat there. So we didn't, we had the money, but we didn't do anything with it.
We bought a computer program that's doing all this, right? It should, once it's all in, it shouldn't be an annual thing. It should be, we paved a street, we paved it, this is the date. That's it. Then that's updated.
Each, the software works on pavement segments. And so anytime a project's done, that pavement, pavement section has to be updated in terms of what was done to it and the anticipated useful life, based on what was done to it, whether it was cracked ceiling, skim coats, full reclamation and repavement. So that has to be updated annually. Updated unit pricing needs to be done annually. And then for those roads that have not received any treatment, maintenance work done on them, those sections need to be inspected and the pavement condition index needs to be adjusted, likely down because pavement condition deteriorates each year that work has not been, you know, maintenance work has not been done. So there is some degree of work that needs to be done. It's not, you can't just rely on software. It does require, you know, the work to get out there and view conditions and to make sure that you're inputting the data properly so that the software can come up with the updated report for you.
I just, I thought when he came, when he came to see us, once we get the basic in, it should, if the DPW Director's out doing something, he can look at a street, go back and update some sections. I don't, I don't think we were planning on hiring a consultant every year. It's been, it's been a year since it was 2000, probably mid-2015 that this happened. And now it's 2016.
But the only pavement that's been done has been this year. So conditions have deteriorated. So the work that has been done will be put into the system. The work that hasn't been done, the pavement condition index for those sections will be inputted. And then it should be much easier for Butch moving forward to keep that updated yearly.
Well, I think it may be the same question as Chris had too. Isn't Butch able to do that when he's out seeing, like Chris just said, you know, he's inputting that we've done Malden Street or whatever street? And then if he's out, so those come off the list. And then the ones that are in line to come up, wouldn't that be in automatic? So when he's out, he's looking? I'm just, I'm just wondering why the consultant, as I was under the impression too, once we had this, that was, we're going to go forward with that program.
To date, Butch has not been inputting the improvements into the system.
Okay.
So he's been on the job five months now.
So nobody's inputted anything?
Nobody has inputted, in, prior to Butch being on board, no one had inputted any data into the system. So the data that's there is a couple of years old. So the small project that we're receiving the community compact grant funds for will get that updated to today's conditions for us. And then it will be very easy for Butch to move forward to keep that updated. And as long as we're successful in doing the yearly updates, you know, we may not need to have a consultant come back in for quite a while. You know, it's, we have, that will be a wait and see. We'll see how successful it is moving forward.
But the grant money is paying for the consultant.
The grant money is paying for that consultant to come in.
Okay. Thank you.
We're getting quotes from qualified consultants. Those quotes will be sent to DOR and they'll use that for the basis of establishing the value of the grant contract that they'll be sending us.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions on any of the goals? Okay. Thank you for that update. Next item is meeting and invitation announcements. At December 14th, we're going to have a Board of Selectmen's meeting. That's going to replace the December 21st. So it's December 14th at 7:00 PM here at the Board of Selectmen's Meeting Room. Also, on December 15th, we'll have a, at 7:00 PM, we'll have a FIS meeting, as was mentioned earlier. Next item is future agenda items. There are some items here that we've listed. January 4th, 2017, public hearing to consider adopting town hall door locking policy. January, also on that day, January 4th, 2017, public hearing to consider amending ambulance rates. And then, does the board have any other future agenda items? And then, does the Board have any other future agenda items or selectmen's reports? Anybody?
Just to give people an update, Board and the town, there was a project roundtable yesterday, day before?
Last night.
Last night on the Curtis Project. The people that are going to be involved in issuing the permits and putting in their input into the permit were all there. The building owner was there, the design build contractor was there. Seemed to go very smoothly. Raj and I were both in attendance. I don't see there being any major issues in getting the building and the permits. The building owner and the architect seem to be very aware of the noise, the noise concerns of the neighbors. And it looks like they're going to take the steps to make sure that the neighbors are taken care of.
That's during construction, the noise? Is that what they're?
No. Well, they were asking about during construction. And the answer for the during construction is, that's construction noise. There's not much you can do about it. But when, but the trucks coming in, the shift changes, they are planning on putting, it looked like a very dense row of ten-foot trees that are going to act as both a site and noise shield for once the project, once the project is completed.
Thank you. Any other future agenda items or reports? Okay. Hearing none. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?